Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. Today is Wednesday, April 20th, 2022. We're in a meeting in the Wacoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North. Mashpee, Mass., 02649. It is 7:00 PM. This is being broadcast live on local channel 18 and streamed live on the town of Mashpee website, HTTPS, colon, forward slash, forward slash, www.mashpma.gov, forward slash, channel 18. I'll call the meeting order and invite everyone to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from April 6th, 2022. Does anyone have any comments on them?
No.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Motion to accept the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Motion made in seconds. Halls in favor say aye.
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 There were two people that just walked in late. I don't know if they wanted...
Two people that just walked in later. Are you interested in public comment?
Yes.
Here, we'll get you signed up on the list, okay? You're welcome. All right, what do public comment? Marie Stevenson?
Hello?
Hello.
Hi. My name is Jay Marie Stevenson, and I happen to be the chairperson of the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, but I'm speaking for myself, and I think that's important to delineate if you're speaking for your, and have the approval of your total committee, or you're speaking for yourself. Why, and I need to delineate, I think, to tell you that because I have been a member of the Inclusion and Diversity Committee, I really have had to explore the subject in great detail. What is inclusion? What's diversity? What's belonging? And all of those things. So, I think that I can bring in a little bit more of a perspective than, say, others like you who are studying different areas, right? And also have a background. I'm retired now, but just like many of the people that retire here, I have a significant background in the areas of group process and communication. All right, so what I'm here to do tonight is actually to support the process. I really believe in this process, and I think that while we've got some issues, we know that now, while we're mediating the issues and considering all the concerns and recommendations that citizens are offering, you know, the process is good. And I had a wonderful conversation with Evan and worked out, you know, some of my concerns, and I thought we had a really good dialogue, and again, he knows that, and I support his efforts and yours. So, let me just address my perspective. The first thing is that you cannot include by excluding, okay? This is, you know, counterintuitive here. And ironically, I want to point out that the circle process comes from the traditions of our indigenous people, and it carries the principles of sharing power with each other instead of exerting power over one another. And one way to impede that process is to eliminate someone from the circle. And it's, so the two persons that were highlighted by your committee chair at the meeting at the Select Board, the two persons highlighted by your committee chair represent two groups which have represented, have limited representation in our leadership in the town and our committees' makeups, that is, women and tribal members, to be specific. So, like it or not, these are the optics, and they are not good. So, in my opinion, we can and we should welcome all participants, as all, anybody that we can include, whether or not they are elected or volunteer, as in my case. And there can be very clear rules of engagement here ahead of time, and that was very well delineated by the comments of Mary Wigan and David Whedon, in how they, how they conducted themselves at that meeting, and as how I did. As a member, I identified myself as a chair of the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, and it happened to be pretty useful in the, in the group that I was in. And then finally, remember, the way that this process is built is that there's a facilitator for each circle, each group, so there are ways to make sure that these rules of engagement are followed. So, basically, in summary, I believe that we should support the process that's been developed, and we should trust in the process, and in order to do that, when we can remedy the problem at hand, we can address concerns and reestablish some trust, because that's what we need. I'd like to talk about one other optic, and that's going on within your own committee and other committees in town. We've had a couple of resignations in, you know, another committee, people getting very frustrated. And so, the idea of group process and communication in all our committees is very, very important. And here we are, we come in as individuals, and maybe we don't know that much about what group process and communication is involved in that, because we all come in with different positions. And unfortunately, I think, in the instance of this committee, there's been some kind of an optic that looks like bullying, and I will let people consider that. So, I'm going to suggest, I'm going to go to the next Select Board and suggest to the town manager and to the board that maybe we could expend a little bit of money, so when a committee, and this is going to happen to you, to all of you, this, your committee, Mr. Phelan is leaving the committee, you're going to have new committees, you may or may not have a new chair, and that could happen in other committees as well. So, if you have committees that are really, where there's evidence of some kind of toxic behavior or unrest, I would like to recommend that there be a consultant brought in. Doesn't take a lot, but to, at the initial, you know, when a committee is reformed, that then you have somebody come in to help them understand the group process and the role of each individual. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Baracco? I hope I pronounced that right?
Brief. My name is Mark Baracco. I live at 76 Wheeler Road. At the recent local comprehensive planning event on Jan, on Saturday, April 9th, I was assigned to table number one. A woman from Weston and Sampson was the moderator for our table. When we were asked individually by the moderator to share our opinions of Mashpee's strengths and opportunities for improvements, and then challenges and areas of concern, Mary Wagon asked that she speak last after each of us spoke. After reading the Mashpee Enterprise article about the Select Board meeting, I realized that Mary Wagon chose to speak last so as not to influence our opinions. John Filon's concern about Mary Wagon's participation is without merit.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
We have a bit of a theme going on tonight. I'm Lynn Barbie. I live on Surf Drive. I'm going to hold most of my comments regarding the remarks by the chair of this board, both on April 11th and again in today's packet. Suffice it to say that today's clarification is basically a repetition or restatement of his April 11th diatribe, but I'll address that when the chair is back from vacation. I want to specifically address the local comprehensive plan in the first workshop. Our consultants explain that the local comprehensive plan is a document and a process, but hopefully it is far more. It must be a directive to our boards, commissions, and committees to do more, different, better, less, because that is what we, the residents and taxpayers, want and the town needs. In that sense, it is very instructive to look at the existing or old LCP. Town Planner Evan Lehrer is going to make available copies of the summary, which is online, but it is several hundred pages, so some of us, like myself, prefer to read it in hard copy. Yes, the town is a different place now, and factors such as climate change and water conditions are significantly different. Also, the population is different. The impact of development has affected the environment and other important factors. It is still essential to see where we were and where we hoped to be back in 1998, and to determine what those who are in governing positions, including those who determined budgets as well as zoning, were able to accomplish, and what they or we couldn't quite do and why. And I use "we" in quotes because I was not here at the time. No matter how much envisioning we do currently, the people in today's governing positions will have to figure out how to actually accomplish the goals of the LCP, which brings me to who came to the April 9th workshop. There were at least four elected officials there, not just the two that the chair criticized. There were also many who serve on town commissions and committees, like the Finance, Community Preservation, Human Services Committees, and the Conservation and Water Commissions. Many brought important expertise, but all ideas were welcomed equally. We want these people on these commissions and committees to be engaged because they will have the responsibility, or we will have the responsibility, as well as the Select and Planning Boards, to implement the LCP. These folks are also our neighbors and friends, not some elusive power base. One of the strengths of Mashpee is our opportunity for direct democracy, serving on committees and boards and voting at town meeting. Democracy requires work and participation. We want and need to hear from a lot more people. The strength of the existing LCP is the broad outreach and input the then Planning Board achieved. We should thank them. Currently, we are in a very condensed timeline for accomplishing this new LCP. That's a shame, but we must do our best to have workshops, meetings, and survey results from other residents. Hopefully, current technology will help in this. As many of the people who participated in the April 9th workshop would agree, I hope, putting residents in a room together can be informative, creative, and very productive. Others may stress some of the other problems or issues that resulted from this workshop. I've pledged to help Town Planner Evan Lehrer with presenting as many workshops as people want. We have a fairly extensive list of stakeholders to engage in this. Weston and Sampson staff have given us the resources and model to do other workshops. Now, we have to make sure that we provide them with the input to create the next LCP document. So, if you belong to an environmental organization, or homeowners association, or other community group, or if you work in public safety, we want to do a workshop with you. I look forward to the support of the Planning Board, the Select Board, and the town manager in this endeavor. Our residents deserve no less. I'm here to help. I hope others will also. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Jacobson. I live at 195 Falmouth Road. I'll be very brief. I participated in the LCP workshop at the high school on April 9th, and I was assigned to a breakout group. David Whedon was at my table. I just want to comment as a follow-up to Mr. Filon's public comment that in no way did Mr. Whedon's input at that table influence any of the rest of us more than anyone else at the table. All eight, all eight people at the table contributed ideas and brainstormed the strengths and opportunities of our town, and that was done equally. Personally, I found Mr. Whedon's knowledge of the history of Mashpee to be very helpful, but his role was as, was as a citizen of the town, not as an elected official. I don't see any reason why he or any other town official should be criticized or prohibited from participating, and as Lynn Barbie said, it was more than just Mary Wagon and David Whedon who participated, who were town officials. His input was valuable, as well as every other participant's input was.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Gregory McKelvey, 11 Minnepsha Road in Mashpee. Good to see you guys tonight. I was at the comprehensive plan meeting from beginning to end. I am a stakeholder in the fact that I'm on a committee in Mashpee, I'm on the Mashpee Finance Committee, just to have that disclosed there. I realize it was a rough start, and I also realize that when something new happens and you bring in something forward, that there can be adjustments that have to be made. But I have to tell you, I sat at my table, table number seven, and there's several of my folks that were at that table that are here tonight, and I was totally impressed with what was happening. We were sitting around a table, talking, and we were agreeing and we were disagreeing without anyone yelling at you, without anyone throwing a punch, without anyone calling you a name. It was dialogue, and that's what was needed. Respectful dialogue, and that goes from those meetings that we had to town committees and town government. Respectful dialogue. I thought that the job that Evan did was very good, and I support him, and I'm happy to help in any way that I can to you and to this committee, because I think this is an important process as we go through. And you're right, everyone, as a citizen of Mashpee, is an important stakeholder in this process, and I encourage anyone listening or watching to come to those meetings, to follow up, and don't just sit at home. It's, it's painless, trust me, and there was some good grub there too, by the way.
Free doughnuts, yeah.
Yeah, free doughnuts, that's right. And, but it can be a learning experience, and people sometimes are timid, but I think the more groups that we have involved, the better, the more diversity of people, the better, and I think that's a very important thing that we have in Mashpee. I'll also say this, as I serve on the Mashpee Finance Committee, I know that the town is always in need of committee members. There's a list published in the papers, a list published on Facebook. These lists do not discriminate against women or any ethnic group. Every group is welcome on a committee, so I encourage every group to look for a place to serve on a committee and come forward to do so. Again, thank you for the time tonight, and I appreciate the process, and I look forward to the meetings ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, I hope I pronounced this one. Michaela Colombo, is it Michaela?
It is Michaela.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you for pronouncing it correctly. That doesn't always happen. I'd like to start by, by thanking Evan. I got back, I was in touch with Evan. One of the questions that came up at the comprehensive plan was where were the documents that the consultants had analyzed? And there were several of us who asked that because of transparency, I mean, basic research transparency. And I reached out to Evan, I think, the day after the meeting. He was back to me within a day or two. He sent me a list of the documents. I know he promised that they'll be on the webpage, and I know you're busy, but I look forward to seeing them there, but I appreciate your responsiveness.
My pleasure.
Throughout the meeting, I think it's, I agree with what's been said, so I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said.
Could you be closer to the microphone?
Thank you. I really appreciated everybody who was at that meeting. It was a really, we got off to a very rocky start in the large group. When we got down to small groups, the roundtable, I thought the facilitators did a really good job, and I thought everybody who participated did a good job. I, like so many others here tonight, were really pleased to have people who represent the town, people who know the town so well, who've dedicated their time, and I think that brought an insight that was really important to all of us. The roundtable, I was seated at roundtable one, so I was seated with Mary Wagon. I didn't realize either that she purposely didn't speak, but I knew she didn't. She kept saying, "I want to wait until I hear what everybody else says." Sometime, that meant that we went around the table twice with people inputting. Rich, appropriate, important conversation. People disagreed, people agreed. I agree with the last speaker. It was very, it was just rich. It was important conversation. At no point did I feel that Mary tried to steer the conversation in any way, quite the contrary. I was really appalled at the Select Board meeting. I attended the Select Board meeting, and I really didn't understand the criticism of Mary and of David Whedon, because I thought, I appreciate the fact they were both there. I appreciate their dedication, and I was really appalled they were called out. I thought it was unnecessary. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. I just want to say that David Whedon, 53 Main Street, I just wanted to come in and express my concern with, you know, Chairman Filon coming to our meeting and stating what he said. I was taken aback when he said that, you know, it was decided, and he made, he framed it as though the consultant determined that, you know, member, elected officials would not participate in the process. I don't feel as though it's right for a consultant to make that kind of determination. The other issue that I took was that, you know, Mr. Filon seems to be a pattern that he represents himself as chairman of the board, and so my concern was that, you know, he was stating things as, that were deliberated by the board, and he was speaking from that position. From my knowledge, you know, you're not supposed to do that sort of thing. I'm here today as a resident. I'm here as a citizen. I'm not here in any other capacity. I do have a voice as an elected official, and, you know, I, I don't want to be, have that encumbered, my voice encumbered by anyone or consultants from New Jersey specifically, you know. So, those are some of the concerns that I had. Overall, you know, we did start off with a rocky start, that, that, because I feel as though a lot of work went into the LCP. It's a very, very important document. This document is, 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 sets the tone for, and guides the process on how you're going to move forward. We don't create new bylaws or zoning laws every time, every 20 years, stop, we don't start from scratch. We build upon the existing laws, and so the same should be done with this document, the LCP, you know, it's, it's an update, but we need to look at the old document, look at how we achieve goals and initiatives and that, and where we failed, because on the water quality, we failed. Housing, we're failing, you know, people aren't able to afford to live here. With the new influx of people coming in and buying up property and assessments going up, you know, that's even further gentrifying this, this, this region, and it's a Cape Cod region. I mean, it's a Massachusetts issue. It's not even just a local municipal issue. You know, we need to provide housing, affordable housing for people, and this document can help with that. And protecting the environment, water quality, these are all critical, critical issues. You factor in climate change and other factors, you know, it, it's crucial that we get this right. And, you know, I think Evan's trying to do a good job with moving this forward. He wants inclusion, and, you know, once we got outside of the auditorium, I too felt as though the process was really well done. I was relieved to hear some of the dialogue and input that was being contributed. It, it actually relieved some of my concerns, and there was really good discussion around it, some really great ideas. I'd encourage all members of committees, commissions, and boards to attend these meetings, because you hear some really, really good insightful thought going into these meetings. So, you know, I just wanted to come in and say that, you know, I, I am upset that Mr. Filon came in and just read off something and singled myself and Mary Wagon out, and then got up and left the room, did not stick around and want to be heard, you know. I did have something to say to that. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I was a member of this, of this board, and I have to say, the three years that I sat at this table, there was never any contention. We did not, even when we disagreed, you know, we did it in a respectful way, and I have to say that, you know, and I feel bad for, you know, Mrs. Wagon as the only female on a predominantly male board that she's often, you know, kind of ganged up on, somebody used the term bullied, you know, it's a, there's a way to, there's a tone in which to speak and communicate in a respectful way, and, you know, we're all here for the same reasons, and no one person's ideas are overpower the others. And so, I just ask the board to remember that and, you know, treat each other fairly and respectfully, and, you know, dial it down as, as, as other people have said. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Paula Peters, 25 Devon Street. I did not attend the workshop. I'm actually fearful of going to town structured events like that because of the very thing we're talking about here tonight. Mr. Filon's comments, I did see them online afterwards, and I was appalled by those comments and felt that there is a very toxic environment in our town politics that needs to be addressed, and it comes in the form of comments like those that want to silence people like Mary Wagon and David Whedon. We elect people to offices in this town because we care what they think, whether we agree with them or not. Whether we agree with them or not, we have put people like yourselves into office and to sit at these tables to be intelligent thinkers. And if we disagree, we can disagree publicly, or we can disagree at meetings. I cannot imagine a consultant that would say that they're going to come into our town and have a workshop, but exclude elected officials. It just doesn't make any sense at all. And in an environment like that, people like me don't want to go to these workshops. So until you guys can clean that up, I'm probably going to stay home. And I'm a pretty good thinker.
Thank you, Paula.
I'm going to brutalize. Marge? How do you pronounce that last name?
Heck.
Heck, okay, sorry about that.
It means pikefish in German.
I didn't want to butcher it, sorry.
Pikefish are very nasty. I'll try not to live up to that. Well, I would like, oh, good evening, everyone.
Can everyone hear her? It might be better if you just pull it a little farther, they're closer to you.
Sure.
There we go, because then it can echo.
Okay. Marjorie Heck on Hoopole Road in Mashpee. I would like to set the record straight on the off-the-wall comments by the planning board chairman at the last select board meeting concerning the April 9 kickoff workshop for the LCP. The 60 or so Mashpee residents who took the time on a Saturday morning to attend the workshop were not empty vessels waiting to be filled. They are active and informed citizens who think about town issues. It is insulting to hear that Mr. Felone thinks community leaders are clueless dummies. The good news is that all the workshop tables, as you've heard, came up with good ideas, basically the same concerns and hopes for Mashpee. Perhaps those views are what Mr. Felone doesn't like. I sat at a workshop table along with two of the previous speakers and planning board member Mary Wagon. She told everyone at the table who she was and said she would speak last so as not to influence anyone. She actually took notes on our ideas. This workshop table included the head of Mashpee Clean Waters, finance committee member Mike Richardson, representatives of two pond protection groups, one of whom is here, a young realtor, two of whom are here, I'm sorry, and a Wampanoag tribal leader. Not exactly people likely to be swayed, as Mr. Felone said, by any elected official. I don't think he heard anything that went on at our table, although he discussed it. To use Mr. Felone's own language, "he," and not the elected officials he falsely accused, was using a public forum to advance a personal agenda. His blatant attack on Mary Wagon and David Whedon marks him as willing to distort the facts to suit his and his backers' agenda. Who benefits? Not the residents of Mashpee. I hope.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's all I had on the list. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak?
Can I say something?
All right. Public comment. Anyone? Okay.
I have two comments. When this first started out.
Put the mic real close to him, like, pull it right in.
When this first started out with the consultants, I said to them, I worked on the original plan, and I said, "There's still a lot of good stuff in this that we don't have to start from scratch." And I asked them to make sure, you know, some stuff we could keep in, some stuff we may have to change, but to keep them together. So we know here's what was good and here's what we're putting in. And then about last month, I went to historical commission meeting, and the consultants were there. And I mentioned, I spoke a lot there, and I mentioned about the ancient right of ways.
Yeah.
And I, and then, and I said, we, I, with me, Chuckie Green, and Tom Fidella years ago, put signs up. And I think Paula was with us in Willow Bend, where we walked through Willow Bend, put the signs up because the people were complaining. And I asked them to make sure all that was in, and I asked them to leave that whole chapter on the historical committee right into the new plan, because it was written well. And then I asked them to consult with Tom Fidella and Chuckie Green, I should have mentioned Paula, to make sure there's something new that could, we could be added to it and stuff. And they, and they kind of agreed, but I hear, when they were at the meeting, there was nothing said about the tribe of Mashpee. And that's a great history for this town and stuff, and that should be always in it. But I don't understand, are they looking at the old plan, keeping it in? But next time we have a charade, make sure that plan's there so all the people can see what is new, what's not. And, okay, that's all I have to say.
Because I know you're going to clarify that point. So does anyone else have anything to comment?
Go ahead, Joe.
I'll, I'll be quick, I promise. Just to echo your points, I completely agree, especially in, sorry, I'll be loud. Keeping, we got to obviously involve the tribe. And it's a good document to start, that we can't just throw away. But in the beginning of the meeting, that, that did start a little rough. I, I was, everyone was going back and forth, it was loud, and I, you know, I was kind of mid outside. But then someone said, "This document was written when I was eight years old, how does this affect me now?" So I think it's really important that we keep what was there, good, but the town has changed, and we got to learn, as David did, from our mistakes and use that as a building. But it's 20 something years later, we got to work for what our issues are now as housing, clean waters, and whatnot. But we've got to use the old and build in the new.
Yeah. We don't have to rewrite the whole thing.
Right. Now then.
I'll make a quick comment, because I know Mary wants to go on the morrow. My comment's going to be quick on two points. I think one of the discussions that came up long before this started was the, the, it isn't about throwing up the whole document, because there's lots of part of this document that already exists that we don't have to touch, that we just have to maybe tweak a little bit.
Save us time and money.
To benefit, and that was part of the discussion. The other comment I want to make is that the, the meeting prior to that, the Saturday kickoff, that meeting ended, anyone who was here, that meeting ended with a little bit of discussion with participation by members of this board or any board in that discussion. And Mary wanted clarification on if she could participate, because she thought the, the comments, and it was led by the chairman.
The consultant said I couldn't talk.
Right. And, and I, I will say this, I spoke up right away, said, "No." I, all I, all, for me, all I wanted to see was that we didn't control the conversation.
Yeah.
And I want to give you credit, Mary, because from what people talked to me, and unfortunately, I couldn't stay at the little meeting, but people said you didn't. You absolutely wanted to be the last person to speak. You wanted to let people voice their opinion, you didn't control the conversation, and that's the last, that's how our meeting ended. We all said that at the end of the meeting. So it's unfortunate it went the other way. I wish I had been there more to try to help.
Somebody accused of it going the other way. It, it did go the way we planned.
Unfortunately, the message that got sent out at the, the, the select board meeting said something contrary to that. And, and it's unfortunate, and I just wanted to thank you for, though, how you participated in that meeting, because that's one of the things my concern is. And as, as the chairman, and one of the things I voiced when I first got on this board is, this is a consensus-driven board. All of, our voice is together, whether we're on the, on the positive side or on the negative side, once we make a consensus decision, we move forward. I always had problems with someone, a member of this board, speaking to the public and representing themselves as the board, because they're representing me. And if they're talking, and had not had and discussed it prior to, to talking with me, then they have no right to be talking about whatever it is. They shouldn't be representing the board. And by saying, "Listen, I'm the chairman of the planning board, and I'm, well, I'm the co, the vice chair of the planning board, but I'm going to speak for me." Well, I've already set the tone. By saying that I'm the vice chair, there's some sort of implied knowledge that the people are going to derive from that. And I don't, I don't think that's how you should do it. I think David Whedon did the right thing, and I think you did the right thing by not stepping in the front and leading the discussion. You step back, and it's unfortunate it happened. And I will say that from the roundtable, which I didn't get a chance to participate because I had another commitment, I had to leave, but it sounded like it went well. Things started off rocky, and I think this process, one of the things I, I wanted to do when I started on this board was update that LCP. It needs to be updated, not replaced. Needs to be updated to, to fit our needs in this community. And I hope that's what comes out of this. And, and I don't think it's going to be too rushed. I mean, we do have a timetable because we have a limited number of funds, but I think we need to move forward. And I think what everyone said in here, we need to get the people and the public to participate. Everyone in town, all the different stakeholders, step up and participate, because that's the only way it's going to be done right. Because if, if, if you have a concern and you don't speak up, it's not going to get addressed. So I implore people to step up. And I know this is a little longer than I said it was going to go, but go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chairman. So I just want to thank you all for being here. It makes a huge difference, obviously. You can feel the difference in this room because you're here. So thank you for all your comments, and thank you for supporting the work of the planning board. I, I do want to let you know that since that opening of the LCP, I have taken some actions, and I hope they're the actions that you want to be done on your behalf. I have asked the town planner, Evan Lair, to add to any materials that go out from the planning board about the LCP, and especially maps, to include four landmarks representing the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe. The tribal headquarters, the land that's in reservation, the Indian Meeting House, and the Mashpee-Wampanoag Indian Museum, at a minimum. I have spoken to the consultant and Rodney Collins and Evan about how people are spoken to at public meetings that have a mic. Okay? So that's a work in progress. The other thing I've asked is for all LCP materials to be vetted by the planning board, including surveys and maps, so that collectively we can catch things before they go out to All of the materials that we produce as groups have been posted on the planning, the LCP website, www.planneshpee.com. They haven't been summarized or analyzed, but there's all your dots and all that stuff that people want to start looking at that. And I just want to let, this is so difficult for me to say, but I want to let the tribal members know that regardless of what anybody did with that map, or the consultants, how they treated you, the majority of tables put the tribe as a resource for this town. Five out of seven. On, in my table, it was the first comment made of the roundtable was the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe was a resource to this town. I've been there side by side with you since I got on the planning board. And David, it was a pleasure when you were on the planning board with me. And I learned so much from you. So I just don't want to let that, I mean, that broke my heart, Paula, that you said that you didn't feel comfortable or welcomed at that. That really breaks my heart. I think that we should have a workshop specially targeting the tribe. I think we should have it at your headquarters, okay? If you don't want the consultants there, I completely understand. We have people that will voluntarily facilitate for that. But I think that, that this needs to be, this is a pivotal moment in the town, right here, right now. And I'm ready to cross the bridge and get rid of this divide between the town and the tribe. That's it.
And now you have the floor. It's the LCP of this town plan.
Well, first, I suppose, I'd like to extend my appreciation to everyone participating tonight, to the board members' comments, to everyone who participated on that Saturday, and has given my department substantive, constructive, and critical feedback, not only on the day, but on the process. There's a lot that I want to clarify, but I want to first start by addressing the critical oversight that made our Saturday kickoff event not as productive as it, as it could have been. So first, to the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe, to all of its members who live in Mashpee and elsewhere, my most sincere apologies for not providing the oversight and the documentation that I should have to make everyone in this town feel as if the process was designed to empower you to participate. It was an unintentional oversight, but one that I know carries weight, and it will not be an issue that persists throughout the rest of this process. So from the bottom of my heart, both personally and professionally, my deepest and most sincere apologies. I'll look forward to working with the planning board and with you all to address those issues. To Mary's point, I have, I have contacted the selectman Whedon to begin addressing some of these items and further. I've submitted a, an email to the tribal chairman to inquire as to a potential workshop at the government center. Next, there have been a lot of questions, I think, that, that were identified at the beginning of that meeting and that Dennis you've, you've raised since. So I want to address the 1998 LCP and how it forms the basis and the foundation for the update we're undertaking. It is best practice, and we're required, really, via this update, because it is an update. Now, I want to make clear that the document might look different than it did in 1998, might be formatted different. But when we go through the long-term planning process, we need to formulate a base of existing conditions so that we can vision and plan for the future. A critical component of the, of developing those existing conditions and formulating the basis of the update is an assessment of the goals, policies, and actions that were defined in the 1998 document, and ascertaining what progress was made on the action plans defined in each of the elements. I understand that these questions, I think, are, have arisen because we haven't made that front and center. So I'm going to commit to assessing each element of the LCP, the action plan contained therein, and identifying that action plan and where we stand, so that we can understand what we've accomplished, if we've accomplished it, and if we haven't, why we haven't. Was it funding? Was it political will? Was it some other reason? So I'm going to commit to that to ensure that everyone is aware that we are undertaking a process consistent with best practice that honors and respects the foundation of where we're moving forward, and that is the 1998 document. So it will look different. It will be formatted different. But the basis of the plan of the update is the 1998 document. We're not starting from scratch, Dennis. And I want to make that abundantly clear. And if it hasn't been, I, I apologize for that as well. Well, my intention is to, and I also want to address Ms. Colombo's comment. Thank you for email. I've begun utilizing that, using that list of documents that I provided to you on the planning department webpage, I have a maps and resources section, and I've included on that page a literature review for the LCP, where I'll be uploading all of those PDFs, and I'll link to that webpage via the planmashpee.com website, so all of those documents are available to you and any other resident who's interested. I also want to clarify another item. When we developed the RFP for the LCP, we also discussed the idea of merging certain chapters as to reduce redundancies. So I want to make very clear what chapters are merging. So when, you know, we have public safety and municipal buildings, facilities, that's a chapter that will likely become one. So I'll map that out and make that available to residents to understand how the 1998 document will evolve and morph, but will still form the basis of the updated document. I think that's all I have to address on that Saturday event. Again, the day was largely successful. It was a rocky start. I was proud of, when I walked around the room, of the manner with which residents were participating with board members and everyone else. And I left feeling like we had accomplished something despite the issue I had noted earlier. And again, that will not be an issue that persists. But moving forward, I, I think, I want to remind everyone that we're at the very beginning of this, and there were lessons learned in that kickoff event that will only inform and improve the subsequent events that will follow. So with that, we had initially targeted May 7 for the following workshop event. So with that, we had initially targeted May 7th for the following workshop event, which we know to be election day. So I intend on suggesting we advertise our next community event on the following Saturday, on May 14th, if there's no objection from the board.
No. Good.
No objections.
No objection.
Yeah.
Is there anything on the tribal calendar that would be a conflict?
May 14th?
May 14th. Because I know the date that we did the first pick was a conflict.
Yeah. So what I'll say is this needn't be decided tonight. I will review the community calendar. I will check in with our friends at the government center about any potential conflicts for the tribe with the, you know, tentatively scheduling May 14th. If that's not possible, I'll submit that in writing to the board and make that very clear.
I'm fine with May 14th. Dennis, are you good with May 14th?
Oh, yeah. I'll just change my dentist, but yeah.
The other thing, are we going to have them all on Saturdays?
We, the bigger workshops, like the four, five we've mapped out, I think Saturday works best. I mean, nothing's perfect. And again, as Lynn alluded to, we're going to work on getting to some smaller organizations, probably as their schedule, own schedule dictates. If someone can provide me a better date and time that, you know, captures as many people as possible, I'm all ears. I'm certainly going to be there regardless of the date or time, but Saturday seems to be the best.
Okay. I think that we should just, if everything else works out with all the parties, I would contact the tribe to see if they have any event on that day that would conflict with it. You're looking at the other calendars for the town.
Just getting outside time, the rec department.
I think that we're fine with the date. You don't have to check back with us.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Dentist already canceled.
Right. He's going to check with the schools.
Make sure there's not an event going on there, yeah.
Yeah. So continue to look for information on both on my department's webpage. When I have a definitive date, we'll make sure it goes out on the Facebook page at the very least so there's a blast that goes out.
Are the officials going to be allowed to drop?
I also want to, that, good question. I'm going to clarify this.
Who says they can't?
There has been some, and maybe this, whether this is real or perceived, it was not the intent, as I understand it, of the town's hired consultants to suggest that any board member, elected or appointed, including the planning board, not participate or not speak. The planning board, though, is the elected body who are the guardians of the plan and you have a unique role in this. So there was suggested that you be conscientious of your role in the plan's development and allow for a free flow of dialogue and that was the directive. And Mary, you clarified that directive. We spoke on the phone and I thank you for thoughtfully and substantively participating because it added value. So I don't believe that was ever the intent of the consultant, nor is that the directive that should be heeded by any other board or commission.
And we know that no institution can take away your right, your freedom of speech.
This is truly...
So, you know, it's not up to anybody else.
Yes.
It's up to us to express ourselves and express our right and freedom of speech. No institution, nobody can take that away from us. So I honestly, my red flag went right up when I heard that and I clarified it with them.
Yes.
And Paula, I hope you come on May 14th. And if you don't feel comfortable, you find me, you sit right next to me, girlfriend.
She'll protect you.
So just to make it abundantly clear, and Mary, you said it well at the select board when you were responding. This is a participatory, inclusive, intended to be inclusive, process that should, if it's to be successful, capture the broadest cross-section of the residents of this town in all of its diversity, inclusive of any appointed or elected official and everyone else. So let this be the mission. Please come to our events. We need to hear from you, whether it's in writing or in person or taking our surveys online. That is the metric of success, is your participation. So please, I hope to see each and every one of you in the room and those watching at home. Your homework is to tell your friends and drag them along. That is the goal. And so with all of the constructive feedback we've received, I'm hopeful and quite, feeling quite positive that we're on the right track. And I just would like to thank you all for making the time because it is what makes the job worth it and what makes the future of the town benefit. So thank you. Next steps. Between now and May 14th, assuming that's the date, I need to work with our consultants who are on vacation. You're going to notice they're not here. I was hoping to have them here to respond to some of these questions, but they are also on vacation.
I think it's good that you were the person to do that.
So they are also on vacation and they're not here, but I'll be working with them when they get back to narrow down our list of stakeholders and trying to group them into thoughtful groups to try and address, you know, some focus groups, workshops with those stakeholders. Further, we want to, we've found on the website that all the traffic to the website is coming generally from direct lookups or from Facebook posts, so we want to get some mailers and stuff like that out there to see if we can't drive traffic to the webpage. I've indicated that everything that goes out needs to be brought to the board. And surveys, we're going to be doing numerous surveys. Numerous surveys. And my goal before we even got started was to always target surveys and make them very focused, topically focused as to capture, you know, thoughtful responses as opposed to one survey that might be lengthy and not be focused. So there's a lot more to come and a lot more opportunity to participate that you will be hearing from through this board and through our communication channels on the website. So if you are unable, for whatever reason, to not come to our events, they're hardly the only opportunities to make your voice count and your opinions matter with regard to the plan's development and the goals, priorities, and actions contained in the document itself. So I think that's it.
Yeah, a quick point to what you said. It's not concerning to anyone here because we're all people who are engaged in the town, but there are a lot of people that we still need to reach and I just thought of this now, but as my capacity working for the town, for our short-term rental program, someone in the house, it was me or not, but Glenn came up with the idea to reach these people that, you know, don't go online or don't do this. And we put flyers into the tax bill saying, please, please contact the, you know, the health department for your short-term rental.
Yep. And we'll probably start building a database of...
And here's your bill. Thank you very much for your service. But just another way to reach people and it was fairly inexpensive for the town.
Good idea.
And so I'm happy also to report that my department will be getting an intern in June, a student from the University of Florida, and he's going to be helping us with some of the community engagement work. So when we begin to have community events in the summer, we'll have a table set up and opportunities for engagement at community events as well. So kind of in closing on the update, I'm hoping that this process can be an inspiring one, one where we reflect on issues of the past and the opportunities for the future. That's really what it's designed to do and to achieve some amount of consensus about the direction the town is headed. So I feel like we're on the right path.
Yep.
Good job.
That's it. I don't, yeah, I don't know what else to say. It's just I'm really thankful for everyone coming tonight and I am committed to doing this right.
We appreciate it.
So if we're, if there's something within my ability that I can control via the authority I have as town planner in my office, I want to know so that the issue can be rectified. And I'm an open book. If I'm not available, but you're welcome to stop in anytime. I make myself available. Heck, maybe I could commit to office hours at some point to discuss the process. That seems like a decent idea. Anyhow, I want to be available and I want to get the process right, so my ears are open and I'm listening.
Can I ask Evan a question? When we first did this process, we went each chapter. Sometimes it took us six months just to go to one chapter.
Yeah.
But, okay, after we did the survey, so after all these workshops, we're going to gather all that together before we start working on the chapters to see where the people are. Because I hope that's the process. And I heard we're timed constriction. This is going to take us longer than I think we realize because if we take all the citizens, the thoughts, and try to come up with a plan that fits, appreciate, the whole town appreciates, it's not going to be like an overnight thing. I mean, is that the way it's going to work?
Well, I think you do need to understand our limitations. You know, the 1998 LCP was done in-house with the former planner and his assistant, and it took six years.
With paid consultants?
For the transportation element, I believe, but not all the elements.
No, we did it all in-house.
So it takes, doing it in that manner takes a lot of time.
It was horrible.
So I want to, we are under a more condensed timeline, but we have an appropriation from town meeting to achieve a certain directive within a set period of time.
Oh, thank you.
So by the end of the summer, we'll have, and also, so we're working with a consultant because they have a large infrastructure for which they can analyze the data, compile the data, and also, we're acting as writers. Myself and our consultants are taking communities input and we're just being writers and we're putting that into the document. Well, we should have a draft updated plan by the fall, but it still needs to be adopted. There are probably some, there'll be some rewriting to be done. It'll need to go to town meeting and it'll need to go to the Cape Cod Commission. So the process won't end at the end of the summer, but we will have a draft document. And we, and I, and what I'm saying is it is certainly shorter, the timeline, as what was conducted in the 90s. But our resources and our ability to gather and compile and analyze that data is much more efficient. So I wouldn't let the timeline...
We're not going to rewrite the whole book.
Well, and that's a point, Dennis. I think that book was written from scratch where this is not.
But I don't want the people of the town, they went to these charades and they weren't getting listened to.
Shereen.
Shereen.
Point of clarification on that one.
That's what the Mashpee-Carmans, Mashpee-Carmans was a charade. They put pins on the paper and they never really listened to us. And with the four of them, they have, since I've been on the planning board, no matter what we said, they had their own plan.
Yeah. So Dennis, our...
It's going to be better.
What they're saying, we listen to.
Yeah, so all the surveys, all of the dot voting, it's all going to be public information and accessible and available to the public. So when we have our final workshop, public workshop, which will be a listening session to present the draft plan in August or September, assuming we get there, I mean, that's the design timeline, that's the intent. But the draft plan should be reflective of the findings of each of those processes. And if we don't have it right, well, the data should be available and it should be glaringly obvious. But that's what the listening sessions are for. If we didn't hear you right, we didn't capture the data right, then we will rewrite sections or clarify those issues.
Good.
I get excited.
Why not?
You know, don't get excited.
People crying.
And I miss you, Dave, sitting beside him.
I thought I was going to keep it calm tonight. All right, Chairman's Report. Obviously, there's a number of things in the packet, including letters that were sent. Please just review those. You may have already done that. I will take this moment since it's the Chairman's Report and I'm sitting in the chair, just to thank everyone here.
Thank you.
It's been a good three years. I kind of echo what David said earlier in that he learned a lot and he enjoyed his three years on the board and I likewise did the same. I'm still going to be around, though. You know, I still have a lot of stake in this as well, so I hope to be a resource. But I want to thank all of you. It's been fun. We don't always agree, but that's okay. But that's okay.
That's the process.
We move forward and my year as chairman was, wasn't bad. I thought it went pretty good. So in hindsight, I wish I could keep it on going, but...
I hope I put a smile on your face.
Yeah, you always do, Dennis.
Always did, Dennis.
So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Jack, for your service.
So that ends the Chairman's Report.
Thank you, Jack. Thanks, chief. Thank you, chief.
On to do things.
If people don't know, as of Friday, I'll be the new fire chief and that's why I have to step.
That would work.
Appreciate it. They're like, oh, he's gone. All right. Town Planner Report.
My updates are minimal because I've been focused on the week following our workshop event. Poppy Overly District, no update. Floodplain bylaw, I have reached out to Shannon Halls to see if she'd be willing to meet with the board. She is, but her expectation is that I will have gone through our current bylaw in comparison to the model and kind of begin boiling down a draft update. So I need to do that. That's on my to-do list that went on my back burner as a result of the priorities that kind of bubbled to the surface the past week and a half. So that's going to remain on my reports and I'm hopeful that sometime by the end of May, we'll have a draft for your review and hit Shannon in here to discuss it with you from the county. Lastly, I did meet with Willow Bend Representatives last week to discuss the cottage court zoning. I still feel like we're, you know, what they're presenting is generally consistent with what I described as a cottage court, but is not quite there. So I'm not, you know, I really want to make sure that if the board's to consider a cottage court, that it's flexible enough to meet the need, but isn't so specific to that site that it loses value everywhere else in the town. So I have a lot of thinking to do about reworking that draft. And I'm not sure what direction to take. I intend on working on updating that draft and bringing it to you sometime in the next month or so. I think Willow Bend still has a little bit of movement to go to get the typology right, but we'll see if we can't get something that you all are in general agreement with and if it works for them, great. And if it doesn't, it will work great elsewhere. That's kind of the goal. So that's, that's it.
You're calling it cottage court. Is that what they proposed name?
No, it was, they had brought a concept to my office that to me looked like a really conventional... So to that point, I was thinking as well...
Cottage doesn't work.
You could modify your, not the subdivision, the cluster subdivision regulations to accommodate that type of development because that's really what it is.
He was asking for a fire name because it's already a cottage.
I'm just thinking about street addresses, that's what I'm thinking.
Right. So I think I need to consider options here and I don't, you know, I don't have a great, I don't have a proposal yet. I really don't.
No problem.
I'm hoping to have something to you next month.
Sounds good.
So there might be something that the town planner is going to add, have to add to that list.
Yeah, what's that?
So I went to the pond, the Mashpee Ponds update by DNR, and the last piece was from Fessin O'Neill. They're a consultant that was hired with municipal vulnerability preparedness money, MVP money, to deal with the impacts of climate change. And they talked about stormwater in a very understandable way and that they targeted some of the bylaw and subsection of that is a zoning bylaw to be looked at to deal with the impacts of stormwater. Because precipitation and heavy precipitation events are coming more and more frequent because of the impacts of climate change, we're getting, we're getting more precipitation and then we're also getting it in a more condensed or whatever, stronger rainfall, more rainfall in a short period of time. I don't know what you call that, sorry. But a big storm, we'll get like a seven-inch storm, right? Like the messed up Santuitt Pond several years ago. So they earmarked parts of our regular bylaw and our zoning bylaw that we could look at to tighten that up a little bit, to prevent that.
Okay.
To address the stormwater runoff.
You wanted to get some information from DNR?
See what the recommendation is. See if we want to get a bylaw.
So you have floodplain bylaw amendments, you might have stormwater bylaw amendments soon.
Gotcha. Understood.
Great. Board Member Committee Reports. Cape Cod Commission.
No report.
Community Preservation Committee.
No report except that town meeting is May 2nd and there's several articles related to community preservation funding requests.
Yes. I urge everyone to attend.
I don't know if it's, if May 2nd, if it starts at 7:00.
No, there's like seven preservation articles.
Oh, there's seven, yeah, maybe.
There are a lot of them. All right, Design Review.
Nothing to report.
Plan Review.
No meeting.
Yeah, there's no meeting. Environmental Oversight Committee.
That's John.
Historic District Commission.
No meeting.
Military Civilian Advisory Council.
Let me guess.
No meeting.
You didn't get to do one of them, did you?
I did a, I did a, one Zoom. One Zoom in three years.
All that...
All that paperwork.
I should know this.
Well, I'm still on it. It doesn't go away because of the appointee by the governor, so I'll still be part of it.
Oh.
So I will say this.
Keep us posted.
I'll keep you posted if you second meeting. No, seriously. Obviously, you've got to give us something. I'll come to the meeting and tell you that we met.
Speaking of town meeting, is it back in the auditorium, or are we outside? Do we know?
I believe it's in the auditorium.
Oh, it's inside. I think we would have heard about it.
It was a little chilly last year.
Remember the win?
All right.
Yes. Well, we haven't heard from you in ever. Go ahead, step up.
New business relating to the LCP. Evan and the board considered the upcoming town meeting and the upcoming elections, town elections on the 7th, to have some visibility of the LCP activities, you know, going into the school, have a banner up or something, and so...
Yeah. We should probably also load the warrants with flyers as well. I hadn't really thought about it yet, but thank you, Rob. We will make that happen.
Great idea.
I think that flyer idea is better than the tax bill. So I would rather give out flyers, get a bargain to vote, or go to town meeting.
Just keep bashing on Joe. Come on, man.
We'll make that happen, Rob. Before you seek a motion to adjourn, I just want to highlight two...
Very quick things.
Piece of correspondence in your packet. The commission did not fund a request for $25,000 in DLTA funds. So I hope the town will vote to approve the CBC request.
Thank God you put it in.
Nothing's free.
That was an allure one, right?
Yes.
It was supposed to, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Additionally, the commission notified us that the fire substation, DRI, was modified, and it's my understanding that no further action is required for the construction of the cell tower.
Okay.